It's us so much.
It's so, it's so.
You know what's funny is that remember when we lost one of our little pedestals, now we have two.
How do we have three?
There was somebody, we thought somebody stole the top off this, but I think somebody originally, remember? And I was like, why would somebody steal the top off that? But then I figured out there was two of them. We just got back the one below. Okay, so we are running on. Come turn up so we don't have the peanut gallery. All right.
So.
That call back to order.
Always.
Or whatever.
Black boardwork session back to order.
Back.
Six thirty-one. Yeah.
All right.
All right. And first thing on. But it's the OPM recommendation.
So I'm not going to tell you all the names who we can use those while you look at them. In the link that I gave you, but we got three proposals. One was from a come, oh wait, I'm not going to mention the names, right? Duh. So we got one proposal, particular company who's from out of state. And just so you know, we interviewed three, all three companies about an hour and fifteen minutes. And then we deliberated for about forty-five minutes. So there's one company from out of state. They came in at, of course, you gotta, when you look at these proposals, you have totals, but ours is just the pre-construction phase, not the rest. So what, so. One of them that we're not recommending, if you will, will be two hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty was the cost for the preliminary engineering. They've. That they qualified to do it and everything, but part of their budget was like fifty thousand dollars in travel. They're out of Maryland. We just didn't feel they were close enough in proximity to the project. But they did have a professional team and we think they could get it done. Had another one from a company that's done several fire stations and they came in. Their total proposal, pre-construction, all the way to, you know, punch list, getting it done was five hundred and forty-two thousand. Definitely qualified, has done several fire stations in the state. One of the things that we discussed about all of these, even with their credentials, was the fact that the. It's really the architects, when they designed the building and start coming up with it, that needs to know all the NFPA rules. They need to know, you know, the industry standards and this and that for these particular buildings for air exchange and things like that. Really, the OPM is there to guide us and protect us through the project, to pick out anomalies and really do it. The other thing is that, you know, there are some people out there that didn't want to hire an OPM. So that also, you know, we discussed that whole thing also. So the final company is another company, I almost said the name. They have not built a fire station, but they've built several large apartment buildings or renovated historic buildings. We thought one of the bonuses with that particular company was the fact that. With historic buildings, you know, there's certain design criteria, you've got to protect and everything else, get those done. And great attention to detail, even though they didn't, they've never done a fire station. They've done some major projects, whether it's commercial or anything else. Their total proposal was a hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. And the pre-construction part of that was forty thousand six hundred dollars. And of course, when you look at the proposal, you'll see the number of hours, the manpower and everything else. One thing I'll tell you that about. This last proposal is the hours are much smaller for each of the little categories, whether it be project executive, project manager, project superintendent, project admin, project estimator. That's because that person is the same person in a lot of these things. So they're not having to duplicate back a lot of that information to, to the other personnel. And so it's a one-man shop. So the committee unanimously came up with a recommendation from the board, which I will tell you what it is on Monday. And that I want you all to be able to also look in case you had questions about any of the proposals before that recommendation comes down. And.
Did you say it was unanimous?
It was unanimous, yes. We all, I think we all felt all of them could build this and be the OPM for the project. But then we, and we based on the qualifications, distance and time, money and everything else. And I still need to check a couple more references, so you know, before I make that recommendation public though. So besides that, hopefully the camera didn't pick up any of those names. I don't think it's, I don't think it's that low. So right. So do you have any other questions on that?
I can say this is a monumental step forward.
Okay, next is the October firefighter proclamation. I don't know if you guys saw this, but we received. Who was this?
Spirit of America possibly.
Foundation and they're asking towns to create a proclamation for their firefighters. Whereas municipal officials make personal sacrifices to serve constituents, et cetera, et cetera. I think Derek sent us, he sent everybody the email.
They send, just so you know, they send out these all the time.
They do.
Proclamations for.
But if, but if we wanted to, I mean, our fire department worked really hard this summer and really hard. So anyway, says firefighters faithfully, faithfully respond twenty-four seven to a variety of emergencies by nothing fair. Whereas they spend many hours to share training for how to react to these situations. Whereas Castine associates services provided by firefighters. Therefore, it being planned, they proclaim that Castine designates October twenty twenty-five as Castine Municipal officials appreciation fund. Does that sound good? Um, for do you want to do it for November since we're just in October or?
We're, I mean, if we vote on this on one day.
We still have a couple of weeks and stuff.
Exactly. Okay, and so is it, is this focused on the fire department, but it's the municipal official?
Yes, but it's, it's, it's municipal officials appreciation month, but it's focused on our firefighters.
It's the best.
Other, other municipal officials, you know, staff employee.
Probably or?
Well, we can.
Or we were.
We focused on. Yeah, it says. What's it say? We appreciate our services provided by firefighters and other municipal officials, which would be our clerk, our town manager. Our, our treasurer.
I wasn't sure how.
Is there an official day? Like, how is this getting? Just a month. It's a, it's a feel good. It's not following through anything.
Right, it's nothing that we have.
It's a very nice, but it's a nice gesture, a nice suggestion. So and that, and then we can ask the people to.
Right. If I remember correctly, there's something last month for some, I don't know. But because at the MMA convention during lunch, I think they. Ironically, none of, then at first one to get up and they're like, no, get up front and take a picture.
Well, I'll ask.
So it's funny.
I'll ask you to create this if we can sign it and. And then we can encourage people to make sure that they thank their town manager or their clerk.
Well, when I talked to Randy about doing a little appreciation dinner. I don't know Karen or Sue or somebody said, says, says Randy said we couldn't do it in the fall.
Oh, we can.
We can't do it in the fall just because of timing. That we do it in, in the spring, you know? And then, and then someone said, well, why don't we just have to be a staff appreciators today for all the employees and towns?
That's great.
So I talked to Tim from Tenderhearth, they'll bring their trower over here. And then we could have a, you know, a pizza thing, you know? And, you know, we'll figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Yep, that's great. We might have to add those to the agenda, to the agenda of it for next week, but we'll add, we'll add it. I'll talk to Sue.
Okay.
Monday morning and we'll just remind the town, that we need to be, show their appreciation to people who work hard every day. And, and I will just say, a small part of this is that when we were at the main news conference, I was so impressed. For Karen, Sue especially, when we were in a session together and on the entire. Was clerk and her deputy clerks from another town. And they spent the entire session on their phones on Facebook. And, you know, Sue and Karen vacation day, so professional. Coming up with incredible questions, so on top of that, like really, they were really there to learn.
Good.
And I was just.
They are both, they are both.
They are. So I was really happy.
That's great. Okay, surprising next.
Um, comprehensive plan implementation, Derek, I sent you the new PowerPoint today. And.
Did I get it?
I don't know. And if, if you can make sure.
Did have some technology problems today. So like I've had technology problems.
And it's a PowerPoint.
PowerPoint presentation.
I will do.
Implementation, if you guys look at it and we can, we can talk about, I don't, I, I, I would like to be ready to, to have a public session in early November.
Okay.
Possible. So if you can look at it, send feedback, see what else, what we missed. I know I missed, I and I have been working on this. So what have we missed? What have we not covered?
Are you looking for a vote on anything on Monday? Are we have some time?
I think it was time. I don't, I don't think we have to vote on it until maybe the first meeting in November. But I'd like to get a public session already in November and start getting committee members on more.
Okay.
I'm looking still to see if I can find it.
Or maybe take time.
I don't.
Okay, I'll try it again tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tax.
So if you can double check.
I'll see it again.
Yeah, I don't see it. Thanks.
Okay, tax benefits for municipal volunteers.
I don't have anything on that one. No.
Oh, was that Karen?
I don't know who that was. I was confused by that one.
This is coming back from a comment from a resident.
Here it was. This, this is a, so this is from the town of Deaf. And what they do is if they have somebody who volunteers in the town. Think this is basically as an EMT, actually, they have EMTs, firefighters, board of committee members. Uh, they're at least sixty years old. Or a volunteer firefighter. They have to be a resident who has maintained a home study in the town for twelve months. They have to be a property owner. And then if they're on a board committee, a paid firefighter or an EMT. And they receive a stipend from the town. They can make application of a property tax incentive. So EMTs and firefighters can get up to a thousand dollars off their property taxes every year. And board and committee members can get up to a thousand dollars off their property taxes every year. And it's not something we need to figure out now, but it might be something that we need to take into budget with us.
Yeah, I'd like to like research other towns.
Yes, what other towns do as well. That's great.
What other, that's how other towns might handle it.
Fantastic. So.
Those happens if these people's taxes would go down, they'll be the type, this is what I think of happening.
Well, there is that, there is that risk, sure. And then I think that's something to consider, you know, as a small village ourselves. If we wanted to take something like this on. I don't know. What, what size pool of people do we want to, what do we think we can afford to offer? Whatever that is, right? It might, it's something, it might be a different kind of benefit.
Right.
But it might not have to be property. But is that something that we think we, so, or some other way to?
So you'll, you'll do some research.
I'd like to start, yeah, I think we all should, you know, and, and think creatively, like this is a property tax example.
Right.
Could there be, I don't know, water bill example or? I don't.
Maybe.
So.
Yeah, but that's it. That's great.
Kind of like other.
Maybe you get.
Twenty percent of your water bill for a quarter, or I don't know, you know, we. Or some, there's some tax break at the transfer station. I mean, I have no idea, like where are the, where are the ways that people are hanging for services?
And I'm seeing, I'm, I'm wondering, because I don't know, and I'd like to call that and then talk to somebody there, maybe another software member. Just find out, did they do this because they're not enjoying that? Volunteers, is this an incentive to get volunteers? Are they doing this because they just want to thank? Their volunteers have been doing this forever. So I'm just.
I mean, the thing is all these, it's all out of work and a lot of time.
It is. And then I think also, you know, something like. Like maybe, I don't know, I imagine the administrative responsibility of overseeing that. Because if you are granting a sizable benefit, then it needs to be administered fairly.
Right.
And, right, you know, we're not, for example, at the board and committee meetings, we're not there. But how do you monitor attendance? What's the requirement of attendance? Is it a hundred percent? Is it eighty percent? Is it for all five years of your tenure? Or what do you, I mean, it's all those questions about. The enforcement of administrative.
There's a lot of it that we would have to look at and it would definitely be, but, but I think all in the right spirit. Right. I, I like that people are doing interesting things. So it's their best.
Yeah, if you do, send me a link on that too. I'd like to look at it too. Yeah, I, because I can't find it anywhere like.
So I will find a link.
Yep.
Tax benefits for municipal volunteers for Cumberland, that?
You're right. Well, this isn't for volunteers. This is the property tax relief for seniors program, which, by the way, I originally sent you the Cumberland link. But the Cumberland link isn't working right now. So, but the Cumberland. Town manager is from Cape Elizabeth. So that's what I gave you, because that's what they've fastened, bashed in their program after. And basically, and this came from Budget Committee last year, we're talking about perhaps looking at a senior tax relief. Of course, Dan, you hit it on the head. And in order to provide this, we're going to have to raise this money at a town meeting. And Cape Elizabeth actually created an ordinance related to it. So I thought that was great for you to be able to look at the fact that people would have to adopt an ordinance. Incorporating this, I have not found out roughly what they budget every year for it.
What was the individual, like an individual who qualifies? What is, what is the relief?
Well, it, it depends. It can, so it's graduated on, based on, in this particular proposal income. So between zero and thirty thousand, your benefit could be fifteen hundred. Don't forget, we're talking Cape Elizabeth. While we're pretty expensive here, Cape Elizabeth is pretty expensive for homes for valuations too. Thirty to fifty thousand, a thousand dollars, or even fifty to seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars off. The income levels.
We just have to look at people's taxes.
You have to go, right, they have to apply. There's a seventy thousand dollar cap. So your federal adjusted gross income needs to be below seventy thousand, which is the same amount that they also are using in Cumberland right now. So a lot of people won't be eligible if they make more than that. But it could phase out. Very well could be that our program is much lower than this in the beginning. And then, you know, we can adjust it in the ordinance later on and let the people decide. Because ideally, like in New Hampshire, we had a lot of opt-in things, whether it was any veterans tax. So we used to give veterans that served in wars, let's say, a five hundred dollar tax credit. But we had in any veterans tax credit, the people had to vote on to decide whether they would do that. And I think it was two hundred and fifty dollars for anybody that served. So this would be a similar thing where we would adjust whatever that benefit cap would be. And we might just set off at a lower amount and, and put a X dollar amount in there. And I still have to do some legal work, but I wasn't going to do a lot of time into this till I know it's something that we're going to do. You know, I, I hate to spend a lot of time on something, I guess. So, well, that was great, Derek. I'm glad you spent five hours on that. And you voted down in five minutes. So I just wanted to give you some more detail. There's a fact sheet here explaining all the nuances of it, because we don't need to invent, reinvent the wheel, but we may have a lower cap.
My, my overall reaction is, it's, it's, it's good, but we have such a small staff. I mean, this would all have to be, you know, verified and accounted.
Right.
And, and, you know, like, all we have is Karen.
Well, I would go into the assessor. That's why I would want to bring Rob in, see if he's dealt with something like this in one of his other towns. See how much of a time burden he would think on, you know.
But I just don't think, I don't think if it falls on Karen, I just don't think that it, it's feasible, you know?
And I don't know, even know about like the software, if they're able to like put in a little local, a lot of the software, like the assessing software. There's a local type of thing that you can put in there that would add, you know, added in. And if they're eligible, you add in optional exemption, whatever the amount is. And you would click the button and it would go in on those people, but it would be a year after year application too, you know? So that's the only thing with it is it comes with that time for the assessor. So if there's something you want me to discuss from Rob to pussy, then that's something I could do to say, okay, have you dealt with this other places? What do you think?
I, I would think of initial, like an initial conversation, but I would like to get, get the, that's the basics.
Yeah.
To see if it's worth going into.
All right, yeah. Well, I just want to bring you a conceptual program, because we had mentioned, you know, doing something at, during budget season and, and this was, pretty much shows you the simplicity of the application and what would go into implementation.
You don't want to overburden, but if this is something that Natalie could do somehow, I don't, I don't know how full Natalie's foot is. We could definitely ask and at least find out. So. Thank you, Derek.
And it may be able to be that, you know, you've given up lead time so that, you know, that's six months before even, you know, the tax bills are created or something. So I don't know, like the interest, if this is going to be, you know, five dozen people or three dozen people, you know? I, one of the things I want to look at, and I honestly forgot to, I want to look at some census data and see if I couldn't pinpoint how many households, you know, they have like household income, number of units, and see if I couldn't kind of try to come up with a number of how many people potentially could be dealing with on that.
Seven years, right? We don't have to make it seventy years of age. We can make it seventy-five.
Right. This one is sixty-five and older for this particular one, just so you know. I had Cumberland, I think, might have been seventy, but I'm not positive.
Seven.
Okay.
Make ours seventy-five or eighty.
I might.
Okay, it could be any. And we, in, in New Hampshire, we had exemptions for, so we did this in New Hampshire, I forgot to tell you that. That we do, starting at like seventy, I think, once you hit ninety, you get like an eighty percent exemption or something like that off your taxes. So, which is.
How much was this exempt? Hard no, the exemption you're looking?
This is really, this is a credit, not an exemption necessarily. I mean, we could work it out, figure it out. But the problem with the, the difference between exemption is it floats up and down with the tax rate, which could be a good thing, but versus a dollar figure also.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and like it doesn't need to be seven hundred and fifty to, to fifty hundred. We could set off at two hundred to five hundred, or, or we could just do it a flat fee. If you get it, it doesn't have to be a graduated scale. So however you think that you want to design the program, but if we do it locked into an ordinance, realize that people can't change this on the floor.
Right.
Because those rules will already be spelled out. So it may be a multi-year project, for all I know, to get to that point. But I figured I got, I had a little slack. It was, you know, time to start discussing this stuff.
Thank you, Derek. And it's good to start talking about this stuff before budget season. Because we need to have it all. So, okay. Personnel policy, did everybody get a chance to look through the personnel policy?
Yeah, not as thoroughly as I wanted to.
Yeah, well, that's why, I think we also, should really kick away at this at meetings. I know this is, I didn't need to print out something that's in here.
And Derek, do you want me to send, just send you the question?
Do you want to? Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
I mean, if, if that's where you want to start.
Sure. I can just send a, I wasn't sure about a couple of things. So.
And there are.
I would say this in general about personnel policies. Whenever we updated hours, we always had a special, a special attorney. I really look at it because it's so, the language has to be so precise. And, you know, like, we might like something in principle, and then the attorney is going to look at it and say, no, 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 no. You know, so I, I just, all I'm saying is I'm, I'm cautioning, we shouldn't go too far and, no. We can make some footnotes. What about this? What about this? What about this? And then go to the attorney and say, okay, before we go any further.
What about?
Well, what about the religion? Because, because you don't want to go down that road and they have to redo it.
And I think this version that we have is this from Bernstein shirt.
So this was something I sent them that we, I had the old one that like was from nineteen eighty-nine or whatever it was. A few different managers had worked on everything else. And then Sue and I had actually looked at one that actually the same legal company had done for the town of Naples. And I pulled out little questions of, because we reviewed that like, all right, rather than try to, because what we found out was the old one trying to make it new was like, no, throw it away and start over. There's so much, you know, in it that it's like, no, let's start here. So incorporated all those things and said, okay, here's ours, here's this, and they reviewed it. Now, in the footnotes, when you look at it, when you open up the thing, there are like questions like in page. I don't know, it's seven on this, but I think it might be a different page on the document. Of course, that's one of the things they don't have is individual page numbers. But over in the footnote, for instance, it says for hiring relatives, first degree relatives, including but not limited to, blah, blah, blah. And then it says author could change to immediate family members of relatives. So over in the footnotes, you'll see certain like points, or I raised a couple of things like, hey, what about this? How would this work? And then you'll see that they said, you know, regarding your note on contract employees, does this employment classification cover the employment relationship you were thinking of? If so, so they've left these questions still in there that I brought up from, you know, when we were marrying them in. Because I didn't want to just force them in there.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk more about it.
And this is a, it's only fifty-four pages, so that it's not too too. I think that we should do work sessions on this and peck away at it. And we'll operate under this type of stuff, like, yeah, we can, yeah, let's do this. So, yeah, look into that. Because there may be some things that end up being delicate, non-public type of executive session questions.
Session. Should we take a, a certain amount of it to look at? Do you want to?
I, I think, I think, I think that would be good. Like in here, just so you know, like there's another section, I, I put in like about, you know, if we have caps on our vacation or sick time, can that go into a sick bank and stuff like that? That's over in the margins that say, okay, let you guys figure out what that is. But that'd be if somebody was terminally ill or, or anything else.
Well, why don't, why don't we say that for the next work sessions, which we don't schedule, but for the next work session, we'll look at the first ten articles.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many articles are there total?
Forty.
Well, there's, well, article twenty-one is on page seventeen, so you might want to go, let's see, the first.
Just do ten and then we can do, or do you want?
Let's go, let's go the first fourteen, because then that brings us up, yeah.
Okay, first fourteen.
That's seventeen pages, but don't forget.
And I'm, I'm assuming.
Few of them are.
Session will be the last week of October. So we have a little bit of time. When.
So you're, I'm, I'm just going, I'm leaving Tuesday, back Thursday next week.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
All right.
Any of those some good?
Yes, that sounds fine.
And I'm fine, so.
Yeah, so article, just so you know, article fourteen is page thirteen, so really it's twelve pages. So it's not too much homework.
All right. So did anybody have any questions about general assistance? All right, so did anybody have any questions about general assistance? Have we thrown it, but I'm not gonna go there.
Well, generous and just so you know, I printed out the ordinance because I, you know, I had not gone through every single page. Cuz a lot of this is formatting stuff, but other stuff is new laws that. Have been put into the other ones, but they just rewrote the language in some places. But the biggest changes in this deal with um. Uh some availability of applications. Uh rental, like if you move somebody to another town, town of responsibility. If you put them up in a hotel, there are now limits on how many days a year you can put people up in hotels. And if you put them up for, I wanna say it's thirty days a year, you're responsible, it used to be. After the one month or whatever, they become the responsibility wherever you uh place them. Uh and and homelessness is another thing that like homelessness used to be, okay, where did you come from? But now homelessness starts becoming, okay, they arrive, they're trying to set up a home here. You're you're supposed to help them and then determine whose responsibility they are. It's just crazy and um I'm trying to think what else there is uh in here that. And I think some of those changes were in there before, but this has been long overdue cuz the last one was printed. I I don't even know, two thousand fourteen or something, so.
But we still get some some people when they.
Right. Yeah, but you'll see that uh like in here, they changed it from revision, I think it's eight to nine. So they did some changes in twenty twenty-four, but they're always on the back, like supplementals. And then, of course, the big thing that you get, oh, in the back has burial maximums uh and stuff like that. And crematorium maximums. And then, of course, what we normally do every time this type of year, time of year, is vote on the appendices. A through G or whatever it is, oh, A through I now, I guess there's more. Um which I think is burial expenses. Um but those are the things that change every year cuz they survey the uh data for uh. Food pricing uh for rent in Hancock County, and they do it for every county. They didn't do this in New Hampshire, which is the one thing that I used to tell New Hampshire Municipal Association is, you know what they do for us in Maine? They do this like survey for the maximums, in New Hampshire, they wanted every town to do it. So you could be one town and say, yep, our maximum for housing is a thousand, our maximum is fifteen hundred. And it was all over the place, so, yeah. And so anyways, um like I said, there there aren't as many changes I thought, temporary lodging. Uh talking about recoveries, that's one of the new changes. Somebody goes to rehab, they come back, the the your responsibility, not the town that they showed up in and said, hey. I want an apartment, can you help me out or whatever? So, other than that, those are really the biggest changes, it's just a cleaner, newer ordinance. Uh and the and the table of contents actually match the pages now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for all that work.
Yep.
All right. Um.
Waste of paper, no, I'm just kidding, I'll use it Monday when somebody goes, could you tell me the specific changes? Here you go, I'm gonna give you the topics of the changes, but you want the specifics, yeah.
It was brought to us at the last select board meeting that that the rec committee is feeling whole involved in this, they don't have that. That same exact people from the fire department, from the town hall. And from the rec, they do the Fourth of July every year. And they they asked us if we would consider creating a Fourth of July committee. So, let me find something.
I think, you know, I think Portu- Fourth of July is one of our biggest holidays that our community. Is able to provide and has successfully provided for ages, you know, and everything, we're gonna bring down a lot of people. You know, from the town and uh from other towns, so I can appreciate that, you know, it might be. A good, you know, we have a singular committee of people focused on that.
We have a committee, the I mean, the real plus to me is that this can be a fundraiser for the 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 town, I mean, if it's organized properly. And we have people, you're you're not selling tickets, but if we have volunteer, whether it's QR codes or. Well, I guess years ago, they used to have the fire department down at the British Canal, those people came.
Well, they did, yeah.
Here, no, but to say that like it could be, you know, it could be, we, if we have a committee, we can say, well, you're doing, you're really doing good for the town because you're helping to raise funds.
And I think, yeah, you have people who also, you know, come in for the whole day, go down to the restaurants, the books, yours, whatever, they'll be, they'll be around, which I think is wonderful. Um, yeah, I mean, I would be in, I'd be in favor of of. You know, forming a committee who volunteers. I think I would, I don't know, do, but I think I would love, love the committee to. Do um be mindful of the historic significance of our July Fourth celebrations. That this is not necessarily a call or an attempt at overhaul, but. Uh but to help ensure maybe the legacy of what we've been doing and to help it continue.
And to help you to ensure that.
Such a classic New England, I think Norman Rockwell is just smiling at, you know, the fact that the town bore and the. Potato sack races and things like that, and and the things that, you know, the the influence that like Brad Tenny has had on that whole day. Or Ray Nwala or others who have been there for ages. And especially like Brad and Ray bringing their energy to that space and such fun for the kids.
Just as you just mentioned, uh Brett Tenny, um you know that one of the brothers died.
Peter.
Peter died, so it's the funeral's on Saturday.
Here in town?
I I don't know, but no, no, it's not here, but cuz I'm I'm watching Sarah Jet's August, Saturday. So so for the funeral, so we might, we might wanted to send them a note, you know, like, you know.
Um, psych, I would agree with that, I think, so if we're going to create a new committee. We need to create them a, what, a charter, a a.
Well, I think a mission statement of um like what like Amy kinda just said, like this. Because I I was joking with Randy be- before the meeting um that. Uh when I was in the town of Naples, they wanted to address some issues with Fourth of July. Naples is pretty crazy on the Fourth of July, you know, you get town of five thousand girls, ten. And then Fourth of July hits us twenty-five thousand people in this one mile stretch, and it's pretty crazy. This past weekend, they had a Rocktoberfest, it was the greatest only because they finally used the green space for exhibitors. And it's been twelve years since we finished that project, and the reason that I fought for these bigger sidewalks and green spaces. Were so we could have arts and crafts and people walk around, things to do. And so they used it for that, and I I applaud them, it was a great event, you know, as far as I know, no problems. So we had this committee for the Fourth of July, well, not enough trash cans, not enough porta potties, oh, we should do this and that. But here's the great thing, everybody had great ideas, but when the Fourth of July ran around, they were all too busy running their businesses. Or, oh, I have a family cookout, so I get to run around, and of course, like they had some firemen or whatever. That actually would help with the parade and this and that. But for the most part, great committee, great ideas, but when it came time to do the work, so whoever serves in this committee should also be prepared. To do the work too, this isn't about throwing out ideas.
Other volunteers, and I think that's what some people.
Right.
Don't notice, don't realize in Castine, I mean, my my memories of Castine here, and they're wonderful here. Uh but they usually don't involve Tom. Because he, yes, we run our own business, but he was also with fire department, getting things set up, moving the fireworks up to the bar. And monitoring them for safety and then, you know, carrying out the event with the other firemen. So there is definitely a lot that happens um to that day.
Yeah, and people don't see that, that literally is like, I used to like see my kids for like. Finding the fireworks during the fireworks, but cuz I had to go get those.
Has there ever been an estimate of how many donations to people?
Oh, yeah, but I don't.
Family, this is the biggest family time.
Yeah, and I, you know. Yeah, it's gotta be at least.
Over the course of the day, because then you have your morning activities, right, and the common, I remember for our girls growing up. When you're a kid, one of forty-eight at out of school, right? And you know all the kids in town, when you arrived at the town common on July Fourth, you were like, who are all these other people?
Right, yeah.
grandchildren of so many residents, right? Other people visiting, you got all these kids on bikes, you're like, I don't see you at all during the rest of the year, so it is, it's. When our kids were little, it was like, you could see it through their eyes, they're like, what is going on in my town? But they loved it, they had a great time, so there's that whole influx. And then the whole, all the people that would come later at night, buy the works too, so.
It's a nice one.
But it is.
I personally like it, one of the better, the best. Like, I'd I'd be.
All of the Fourth of July.
Yeah, it's a quick, it's very.
Okay, so we need it, so, so we need a mission statement, we need to decide the number of volunteers to volunteer for the committee. The length of the term, I mean, we can go with the basic five members, two alternates.
Yeah, and it really depends on the interest of, I mean, yeah.
And it may be clear that they need to be prepared to do or or sign up volunteers to do.
Right, I mean, you could easily have a thirteen-member committee, right? And and then just subcommittees broken out into, okay, what? Because that's one of the things, if if they're getting burnt out from doing the Fourth of July. And it's important to have like the firemen that there that I saw, they're out there all day down there, whatever. So they can talk about, okay, what works the best, what hasn't worked the best, to troubleshoot those things too. And if there are some enhancements, but to keep the um to keep the. What did you call it, the history or the the legacy of like how it's been? With the children's Fourth of July parade, no, enables this a parade down three O two. That is cars, trucks and everything, it's just craziness, and that's the third highest. Uh third highest volume traffic road, and we use to shut it down for like two hours. And I used to get phone calls, I I was stuck, I'm like, next time, next year? Cuz on your way to North Conway, next time, get out of your car and actually stop and enjoy, and you might realize this is what the Fourth of July is all about.
Maybe not, with some of the GSA kids that are in town, maybe we get some of the high school kids to, you know, so they could, maybe they won't be able to give any. But maybe we could have like a a youth task force that's gonna do this thing or that thing, you know.
Uh and you know, you talk about kids from away, so in Naples, it's like six or seven like children's camps there.
Right.
So all of a sudden, you start seeing like a hundred and fifty kids all marching, you're like, geez, that's how big that is, right? You don't even know cuz the rich and famous and everything else, a lot of their kids are in those little crowds, so it's crazy, yeah.
So maybe, and I'm not stop on five, which seemed to be tonight, but maybe, maybe we start with five. And then each of the people, or people on the committee takes a section of the day. And kind of is in charge of that section and then creates their own subcommittee or whatever as they wanna do. I mean, they can figure it out, I mean, give them that kind of latitude.
To 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 be funny to figure out.
Bring in as many people as they'd like, I mean, because I know that there are people in town, many, I hear about this a lot, there are many people in town. Who are very concerned that the costume contest is not what it was in the past. No, 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 um for for um. The the kids do the costume parade, the Fourth of July parade, and apparently there used to be, and this way in predate to me. But there used to be specific themes each year, so there was a point where there were like themes. And so the the Fourth of July parade might just be the founding fathers. Or it might just be Paul Revere, everything.
Oh, I don't remember that.
But they did that, they still have a Fourth of July theme, right, but then nobody's necessarily following the theme.
Well, I don't.
Or something.
Yeah, he was dressed up as a chef one year, so.
It's like costume.
If 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 there's somebody who feels really strongly about that, they could be on this committee, they could do, and they can try to make it work and see how that happens.
Right.
Okay, and I think, I think one thing we would, we should stipulate on the committee is that they, that they also need to work closely, collaborate with the casting fire. Because that's a major, obviously, there's safety protocols, but that's a huge part of that thing.
Maybe maybe they could be a representative from the fire department.
Something like that, yeah, something like that, um you know, and that I was gonna strongly encourage them to. To speak with the current members of the rec committee and casters and.
Well, and I think that that's an important part, is to have that part of, you know, what is frustrating, what is worth, what isn't worth, for sure.
And and send it out, throw it around, and you'll come up with all right, okay, that's true, um, flags.
Flags, so you got some rec committee apologizes with the, they couldn't have anybody here because. Though we finally decided we're gonna have this meeting like on Tuesday this week tonight, so. Uh they did give their letter to you um to just, you know, their point, but also there's another email. Don't wanna say who that is to put them on the spot, but they may be interested in discussing taking over the oversight of the flags. Talking about putting them up, taking them down. Um and um and uh or maintaining them, just so you know, today I was out. Uh and I took down three more flags, um we had taken down tattered flags just a few weeks ago. And we did them before.
I was I was telling Derek when I was in Connecticut last week, I went through some little Connecticut towns full of flags. I mean, I mean, I I mean, I guess what bothers me most about this is that we had a couple people. And like, you know, you're always here with a couple people who don't like things, and I and I I I just think that, you know, this might be, you know. One of these situations where we've decided we're gonna do this. And we made a decision and, you know, I mean, you know, we will, we can vote on it, but I I personally. I personally didn't have, I have, I don't have an issue with it, but my my thought to make it more casting, I think if we're gonna flags up. From from Memorial Day to to uh day, maybe we have the four flags. They're like, have it be kind of like a casting themed thing, so that we have, you know, the 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 four flag. Yeah, we have the four flag.
Five, really.
Well, I'd go with the Wabanaki, right?
Grabbing six, now you got six, yeah.
No, but I'm just saying, we could, we could make it, if we're gonna have the flags up for the season.
Whatever.
We'll have it be something uniquely casting.
And I I like that, I like that, and I don't.
And there're gonna be people who want like that, I mean, you the, you know.
I think that's, it's festive, plus it's also celebrating our history, bringing in the Wabanaki alliance is very important. We're gonna make sure that, you know, sure that everyone's, everybody's part of, right, of everybody who's part of the club.
I think so, I think that's great.
That that, I mean, that feels good to me.
By the way, yeah, speaking of Wabanaki, they, of course, uh you were talking about the drumming for the Wilson Museum. Where walk, they were down in Naples and they were doing uh drumming down, and it was great.
Yeah, they're so good at the Wabanaki, okay, well, if if you guys are all good with that, I'm fine with that, our proposal. For next year, yeah.
So I guess I'm wondering like. How, logistically, how we do this, because this I thought was, it was a nice initiative that came out of the recreation committee. Right, that they're like, as Dan was saying, they did Court Street a year ago, then broadened it to to Banmore.
I hope it isn't all the way to Banmore, there are flags all the way to Banmore.
It would, if they're willing, I would love to allow them to keep this initiative in their wheelhouse. So let's not have it be a select or activity that we take over or.
Okay, see, so how about if I send them an email back and let them know that we talked about it? And this was our idea, but they can make this decision, or it, would they consider this, but this is their decision. And they can come back to us with their recommendation for next year.
And if we can connect, and if we can connect this other resident who has offered assistance. Whether or not maybe they become part of the rec committee, or they become part of the rec committee for this project. They can all work together, but it doesn't have to be an activity that the select board has to oversee or manage. Like, we can let them, cuz I think it's just great to have creativity and new ideas and and a committee with energy. And trying to do the right thing, if we can say, yeah, we still support you, but we'd love for you to be able to do this, and we've got someone who can help you maintain.
And then and then as far, as far as the cost, if we're, if they, if they said, yes, we wanna have the five flags or six flags, whatever it's gonna be. We would just have to figure out what it's gonna cost and.
Right, and I think we can support them.
And and the one thing I would encourage them, but it's based on what I've seen. I know when they sent us, they they found the most economical flags and everything else, they need to use like the two ply railing. I know when they sent us, they they found the most economical flags and everything else, they need to use like the two ply really good. Conditioned flags like today was right, and so the flags were trying to fly because the wind did reverse. Behind the telephone poles and they're all hanging up on the, and I'm like, oh, and one of them, when I went by. It was already torn a little bit more by the time I could get to it and take it down. So that, and they also have like the swivel type of thing, so the whole thing swivels, cause right now. It doesn't swivel, so they they wanna hold there, so when the flag and they just. Right, so I mean, and I could easily investigate like what they're doing on, like even through that, Kohl's won't pay for the. Uh, for the, probably the other flags of like France and Britain and Dutch and. Yeah, but Wabanaki Nation.
Giving it back.
And I think, and there, and there may be also opportunities for for donors in town or maybe through the Casting Historical Society. You know, if we're coming out from the historical context, um, that may be able to sponsor, you know, purchasing a lot of it or sponsor a length of. Road or whatever.
Right, exactly. Start, actually, Casting Tour would be a perfect place for the rec committee to go because Casting Tour will get, that's their money and. January, and they could purchase all the flags. If they chose to, that's not wasted.
Alright, I'm just saying, that that could be a resource. I mean, that kind of, listen, wait, we're sorry to, that kind of fits in, I'm just gonna put a little pitch in there. We're talking history and you raise the money from doing historical tours, so it would be good as part of the. Tour, you could be going, driving around, go, and look, here's another section of the five flags, hey, people, what are the five flags? As a little test for, you know, to make it fun.
Okay, alright, the last thing on our agenda, as it is written. And Derek, do you want me to add solar?
Uh, we could, I'd like to go over a little bit of solar with you, I did spend some time and.
Well, why don't we do solar first?
Right, so, um, so I looked at the spreadsheet and I was trying to figure out exactly, you know, I said, gee, so we running in negative? Right, so, um, we would have to have a town meeting to raise some money, we would need to have a down payment of like. Sixty thousand, even though eventually we'd get fifty one thousand of that back, right? Um, but when you look at the spreadsheet, um. The financing amount, uh, and I talked to legal also on how finance would work, because it's only seven years. And then it wouldn't have to renew at seven years until it was paid off, I believe. I forget the year that it's paid off in this proposal, uh, and year, maybe twenty, I think it is. But anyways, and that stretches out, so it makes sense. The thing with this thing is, it's not, it's gonna save us money. But it's not that huge moneymaker like the landfill, I'll give you the short of it, so if we're looking at trying to save a bunch of money. Not gonna save money over the time, we will reduce the carbon footprint if that's your goal, but it isn't like the landfill thing. Um, the, um. This only produces thirty five percent of the energy of the plant itself, because there's not enough uh, space. Um, let's see, uh, I also asked about this. December thirty first date, so wanted to explain better on what that is, so. Safe Harbor Project, okay, that's what he was talking about, if you get it in before twelve thirty one and we've done a substantial down payment. So that we have them in, what that means is we would avoid the FIOC new rules and the FIOC deals with. Uh, you know, buy American, no, um, what are those damn things they're charging us now? Terrace, thank you, any of that extra stuff or whatever, so that locks us in under the old rules. If, um, so when that triggers in, so if we save Harvard still. Um, by July twenty twenty six, would mean that we'd have four years to build the thing, right? Um, but we'd have to lock in by July twenty twenty six, but the new FIOC guidelines would apply. Um, let's see, what's the twenty twenty seven rule? Uh. If not, oh, and after that, I think like you'd have to have, um, the thing up in operation by twenty twenty seven. If not, to safe harbor dates, uh, um. Oh, yeah, if you, if we don't have it installed by twenty twenty seven, we won't be able to buy foreign parts and supplies, so. That's the whole thing with that, so. But you have four years to put it in otherwise, so I don't know if this is really a feasible proposal. Um, unless it's like, it will reduce the, you know, the CO two. Uh, by eighty three thousand pounds per year, you know, and I know there's a lot of towns, that's their whole goal is to reduce the carbon footprint by. Fifty percent by whatever date, so I don't know whether or not this proposal ends up working or not for us. And maybe we gotta roll the dice and.
I mean, if if the cash flow is better, I would be more favorable.
And it could be that. Potentially.
I mean, the only thing I'm gonna say, Derek, is that everything I've read, they're talking about electric rates going up another twenty, twenty five percent. So, you know, I I I guess my slogan would be to go back to them and say, listen. If 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 electric rates were twenty percent more, how much does it change the?
Still only looking at the thirty five percent, so we may be better off waiting to find out what the new state program on net metering is. Cause that's floating out there and see what the landfill project looks like.
I I I I think we should just focus on one, and I I I think the the landfill, we're gonna get more bang for our buck.
Cause what I had hoped is this would give us some sewer tax relief, but in the end, it's not going to.
But can we do?
Not yet, because they they got rid of net metering, they're now creating new net metering, but we don't know what it is till next year, so. Once it's created, we will be able to do that.
In your assessment of of the finances on on this project, if I hear you right, it sounds like. There might be some savings, but it would be over a number of years or we might just be breaking.
Well, the here's, well, there's, we have come up sixty thousand down payments, so really. Gotta kind of borrow that from the general fund, if you will, the sewer, and then when we get back the federal tax credit fifty one thousand. We still have to finance hundred and twelve thousand, so and during that time, we only, uh, the um, cash flows are. They do start going up, but the highest that they, um. Net cash flow during the whole life of the thing is not two thirty three, it is, let me just look. Um, we start saving money, just so you know, but it would be until year ten, really. But then in year ten, by year twenty, we'd save twenty thousand dollars a year, because of. Estimate of increased costs and everything else, so that's a problem, we'd be ten years out and I'm wondering.
When we spoke to the gentleman about the landfill site, there's a project altogether, but I remember asking him. Like he had his, they're not on investment, you know, somewhere on, but it was like seven years, eight, whatever it was. But then I said, and at what point do we have to start replacing the parts of this system? And I think in that instance, it had, some of them had ten, eleven year lifespans, so if we're not starting to see savings until year ten maybe here. Are we also having to start replacing parts on?
Right, you said they last twenty years.
That was left for twenty years.
But were there other parts though, like for the landfill project, there are other parts that didn't have that long of a lifetime, like other aspects of the thing that we would have to start.
I think that you had a little bit, but I think that was included in the O and M part of it.
You know, it's changed a lot, Derek, because when we first did the solar systems, I brought it along. It was like seven point four years, it was, it was so black and white.
In terms of your ROI.
Yeah, and it was like, basically, you financed it for seven years and then you paid it off and, you know, and. You know, I it like, or people, I think we paid for it upfront, but basically if you amortize the cost. You you know, at at like seven point six years, you know, you you were done paying the thing off and you were, you were really, you were, you were, you were cash flow positive. Very quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so this one here didn't make me do cartwheels, you know, to wait the ten years. But to get to that point, like I said, and really, if you get too technical, it'd probably be more like. Fifteen years till we made money, cause we still have to make up for that nine thousand dollars or so. Um, of paying the town back for the extra nine thousand, that wasn't federal tax credits, so. I really wanna do a solar project, but I also like a little more bang for the buck and I'm thinking, maybe we don't rush in, we wait, we let the waters clear. We see what's happening and then we figure out what's going on, the neat thing is, cause I also said. Cause he had looked at it here and he said, this isn't gonna generate enough electricity. And he said, but depending on the roof life, but one of the things we looked at was, right now, they're developing these cool little shingle like. Solar type panel things now, that literally are your shingles and they are the solar panels and they blend in with the roof line, so they're not. Rectangles on your roof, literally looks like it's shingled roof. And that technology's coming along too fairly rapidly, because you know, they're, and they're producing a lot of power with them, so.
I was gonna say, I mean, this project and the landfill project were, were all about us building our own infrastructure. Um, but there was a time where we'd also talked about, um, you know, I think, whether or not. It would be worth it to, for us to buy credits into an existing solar farm, right, like, for example, Ellsworth has a huge one.
I I bought, I bought, I bought into two revisions.
Right.
So I get, I get a twenty nine dollar electric bill every month with two electric cars.
Right, right, and so.
He bought a lot of those credits, sir.
We didn't buy the credits, we bought, we bought, you know, basically we're buying the panels.
Right, right, that are the power, right, but now they're not allowing that, I don't think, right? Until they come up with the new rules.
Okay, so I.
I know we've bought into some, but I think we only get a person each other.
Let's wait for the dust, the dust to settle from this, the model is staying.
So, but I, uh, we will add it as old business, uh, upon the agenda for Monday. And then just, we can talk about it then and.
I would, I would say we don't go to them, we just table it and definitely table it like until we bring it back up. So Derek goes, you know what?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, okay, and then we can also do flags as the fourth of July committee as old business.
Could you get ahold of Dan or somebody, as I'm thinking, to say, hey?
We've, we've sent it back, we've discussed it, we've sent it back to the rec committee for their recommended. And then on, for the July committee, they can say that we think it's a great idea, and if we do, and we're going to. Right, we're writing something up and hopefully I'll have it by Friday, but no promises, okay, uh, story walk naming.
Story walk naming, I don't have a name.
Why not?
I I do have some. I haven't heard of.
But, but we were talking about it at the meeting and, and some people brought up that they wanted to involve the elementary school.
I even had mentioned this.
And 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 we would like to involve them, but I agree with you, we don't want it to be builder bogs.
But but I also would like to think about if we have some benches there, so think about in Central Park or different places, people could. Buy a bench and have it in in memory of somebody.
Bill Corbett has already offered to build it.
No, no, and I like the idea, uh, no, you could, you know, you you make, make a thousand dollar, you sponsor a bench. And, you know, I think that would be really nice, like, you know, at the golf course, they have a couple tees that are named after people, but you know. It'd be nice, it would be nice to have a bench for Mark.
If if you, if you sponsored a bench, that money could go into. Fund for the maintenance and care.
Like into like a donation for the thing of, right.
Hundred dollars, a thousand dollars to, you know, to to get a bench.
And then, uh, just so you know, um. Don't have it yet, I'd like to get some contingency money. Uh, to buy some juke mat for for the. There's the spot out front where, you know, the rocks aligned and it's bare and it's filled, well. I know, of course, I'm putting seed down, but it'd be nice to build, put some biodegradable juke straw down over it. To hold that down in place, and I just started looking at it today with.
Or like seeds down.
Right, exactly, so it holds the moisture under it and everything, cause otherwise we just worry it isn't gonna. You know, seed down is great, and of course, I said, we'll just get the stuff, she's like, no. Not the stuff with the plastic netting, and I said, well, that will rot away, and she goes, but then you have microplastics, and I said, well, let me look. There's some other stuff, so I found some other stuff that's biodegradable. I forget, we gotta figure out how much it is, I think they have a tractor supply and it's straw base that degrades over time.
The other thing that, um, I I received some concerns today that. People are taking their dogs on the story walk, but they're not leashed and they're, um. They're going to the bathroom on their planes.
So we need to say no dogs.
And so I don't know if we need to say no dogs.
You could even have, you could even have, at the beginning of the thing, we we were in a park, uh, last year, last week, walking somewhere, they had a little. They had the little poop bag thing, yeah, so like you could have one of those at the beginning of.
Well, and we can do that, we talked about getting those, we talked about getting those, and I think.
There is one someplace at the highway department.
I think we need to put, we need, we can put those in the budget for next year, we can put one of them there. Um, they're not that much, it's gonna.
It's not that, but you know what, the problem is, then people start leaving their poop bags around for others to pick up, not just the poop. Now, that's the, it's the same type of, most people, like you said, poop bags go in your pocket, do whatever. I said, somebody should build a little satchel thing that when you go for it and it's made and it's setless, so you put poop in and then you get home, you dump it up. I'm thinking you can make a lot of money on it, right? Somebody's gonna hear me in the, on the internet from the millions watching us around the world on YouTube, come up with that, and I'm gonna be, that was my million dollar idea.
Okay, so, but we need to figure out. How we're gonna do this naming contest, do we just put something out to me on the website?
Yeah, just by the website, just hey, it should be thirty days and.
What is your thing?
Okay, so housing, so the the RFP is out for this consultant. That were the lead town for, for the peninsula, okay, um. That's gonna take time and effort, you know, for this person to to really come up with some suggestions for the peninsula.
Is that part of a grant?
Yeah, it's a grant that we want, it's a, it's a grant that we want, that we want, okay, so. The RFP is out, uh, they are already getting some response and that's happened, okay? Uh, secondly, today, when we had our meeting, uh, there was a discussion, which I thought was very good. About creating a peninsula wide, um, uh, uh, housing authority. That would, that would look at the whole peninsula and say, okay, uh, between here and Penobscot, you could build six. Between Penobscot, you could do this, and looking at the needs of the whole, the whole, the whole peninsula, okay? So, so, so the consultant's happening, there's discussion about maybe having a, a, uh. Housing authority, which brings me to our housing committee, so the housing committee is already unraveling very quickly. Kevin, I think is gonna resign this week, um, there's been a lot of, I don't wanna call it conflict. It's just, there are some people who are very impatient, what are we doing, how are we gonna get it done, okay? And this is a very slow process, okay? It's gonna, you know, it's gonna take months and years to, you know, apparently they said today that. Dear Island, been working at it for ten years and it created fifteen units, okay, it was very hard, okay? Which brings me to the committee itself, okay, so. Part of me feels like, until the professionals. Come up with some kind of strategic goals, at this point, the committee, I feel like. You know, we're asking a question, well, how many units do we need, what kind of units do we need, where could we, you know, like, so we're asking all these questions. And every one of these questions, there's lots of complicated answers, and because there's this impatience, well. Doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere, well, we're we're not getting anywhere, right now, we're exploring ideas, but in the meantime. We're, we're not getting anywhere, right now we're exploring ideas, but in the meantime, we've lost members. Kevin sent me a message, I think Kevin's gonna tell me he's gonna resign on Saturday or, you know, but my, 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 my point is. Then, or my question is, not my point, my question is. Should our housing committee be very focused on, you know, we had talked about. You know, the two places that seemed obvious were behind the hospital, something could be built. And when we move the firehouse, that, that, that building could be built, okay? Uh, you know, it seems to me that there's a lot of really good intentions. But it's just really complicated and none of us are professionals, you know, so I'm, 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 I'm just asking. Should the committee kind of refocus in a way? That we're only gonna focus on these one or two or three things until. We get this, this, the, the, the information back from the consultant on the peninsula-wide project. And, you know, I, my personal feeling is that a. You know, a, a Blue Hill Peninsula Housing Authority is probably the best way to go. Because, uh, for example, they were talking today about if, um. The Blue Hill Heritage Trust had some property and they were like saying, well, we need, we need property for housing. Could, could, uh, workforce housing be part of the mission of the Blue Hill Heritage Trust? That when somebody gives land, that, okay, ten percent of that bank could be used for, you know, workforce housing. So I, I guess, I guess what I'm, what, what I'm, what I'm asking is. Before the committee unravels much more, should, you know, I, 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 should I step in and say? We're waiting for this important information, which is gonna take months. Why don't we just focus on A and B? And maybe C being that the, that one of us would be researching the housing authority rather than just, you know. You know, like, how are we gonna build all these units in Castine? Because it's, it's, it's a little daunting and, and there's no, there's no, there's no obvious, easy answer.
Little baby metal carpet for the papers.
Exactly, exactly.
Cycling through those things without being able to have all the information.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I just, I just wanted to, you know, you know, I just, I mean, Derek, what do you, like?
No, I. I think you guys are slowly going in the right direction, I think the most important thing is. That we know that there's gonna be something that encourages housing or whatever, right now. I don't think we have the ordinances that allow for the housing and maybe the committee should look at actually looking at. Changes to our zoning ordinance that will. Be useful for when all these reports come out and encourage housing. That we already have ready to go to make those changes. Whether it's now or even later, cuz I think that's.
But Derek, I think part of the problem is that we have some very capable people on the, on the committee and they're used to getting things done.
Right.
I wanna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, and then, and, 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 and this is way different from that. So I think, I think if we came back to the committee and said, let's just look at the ordinances. That's, that's a very tangible activity.
So, so this.
And it, and actually is something that needs to be done in order to do any of the housing. You can come up with a hundred plans, but if it's not allowed, then you're not gonna do anything.
I was gonna say, so my suggestion would be, so first of all, this committee was originally created. To kind of tuck into the comprehensive plan implementation, right?
Yeah.
And so they're going to become the housing section of that, which deals with the ordinances quite a bit. So when we get the comp plan implementation up and running in November. We tuck them in, we can, we can reorganize their mission, like you said. They can start looking at the ordinance changes that they need to make and then. They can also look into other things like in the grants. They're looking into the, the, uh, Nestery thing, right? And Nestery is where, you know, people share houses and they're looking into that, they can look into other maybe kinds of alternatives. But they, but, but they're gonna need to focus on the goals and strategies from the comp plan.
Okay.
So it's gonna give them a much more finite.
Okay, so I guess, so having said that, do you think, do you think, do you think Derek, I mean, Derek's a member of the. Do you think that we should just like pause, the, pause the, the, the committee for a month? Wait till we do this input, the, 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 uh, implementation. We'll have to have a new chair, okay, and, and Kevin's the chair right now.
So you can have a new chair, you can create, we, we, Ina and I can, or whoever you. You guys can recreate new mission.
Okay.
And your mission will be more tied to the comp plan, to making sure the month plan gets passed. You'll be looking at the ordinance, you'll be sending potential changes to the ordinance review committee.
Okay.
Right, who then will be able to work on this.
Okay.
And, and I'm just gonna say that from my perspective, sitting on. The main municipal legislative policy committee, we've been meeting with Representative Gere. Who is, um, amazing and knowledgeable and yet. Doesn't know a lot about anything north of Augusta. And, and, and maybe she knows more than I think, but, but she. She wants to solve this housing thing, but after sitting on, in these meetings. I don't think the state, I don't think the legislature has a clue on really what they know to do. And they're, they're telling us that in our comprehensive plan, we need to create growth areas, right? Well, I kinda had a breakdown the other night and told Bruce. I think the legislature needs to write a comp plan for the state.
Right.
And they need to figure out their growth areas, because you can't just have every tickle and have to increase housing by ten percent.
This is, this last night, at the, at the, um, at the, uh. Budget meeting, I mean, they were just saying that, like, the state keeps throwing this stuff and solving this problem, solving. Well, here's another mandate, here's another mandate, and, and it's, it's, it's really, uh, it's really hard because. We're being, we're basically being tasked with solve this problem.
Right.
And maybe out of the appropriate resources.
No, 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 no resources, they're, they're, they're not offering any resources.
And we just, you know, we just got, and we're not quite there because we don't have our rental ordinance in place. But, and that could be something that the housing committee can look at too, after the rental ordinance, but when we turn in. We don't, we just got our LD two thousand and three ducks in a row, right, and we're still not quite there. And I did that rental ordinance part. And now they've passed, what is it, eighteen twenty-nine, which adds a whole bunch more layers to it. So we have to go back again and look at our, our ordinances again with the view change. And unfortunately, when they pass those bills, none of that comes with money to plan. Or for money to make those changes, money to hire lawyers, money.
I basically said today, it, it, you know, Derek told me if I'm reading in between the lines wrong, but Greg. Or, you know, with the county, basically said, yeah, you, you, you set up this, this, you know. Blue Hill Peninsula Housing Authority. And immediately you start raising money, like, like he said, then you go out to your community, go out to the community and start raising money. Because, because he, he didn't even, he didn't even allude to like, oh, well, set it off and you might be able to get this grant. You might be able to get that, that, that grant, um.
There aren't lots of money right now.
Yeah.
So, so Dan, I, I think it's, I under, I'm sorry.
No, 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 and I, I, I just wanted you, I just wanted, I just wanted you to know. That it's a very difficult situation and people are getting really, people are getting really frustrated. And, and, um, you know, I've been trying not to, you know, like, you know, you know, like, uh, Kevin's the chair, I've been trying not to. But I feel like, I feel like I'm gonna have to step in and say, listen, you know, this, we, we're, the. The reason that we're having such a hard time is that cuz this is really hard.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we really need to refocus a little bit. And, and the, the, the goal is that we'll refocus in line with the comp plan. And that we will be focusing first on ordinance changes and, you know, a couple other priorities while we're waiting for the consultants.
Exactly.
And, and also, I mean, I'm, I'm a real advocate for, you know, and, and the other question is. You know, and, and this will, if we were to create a peninsula-wide housing authority. So let's, let's just say there's two million dollars, so we raise somebody's two million dollars and Blue Hill comes along and says. Oh, we, we, we wanna do it between Blue Hill and Surrey, we found this perfect spot, well, Blue Hill and Surrey is not gonna do us any good. For, 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 doesn't help us, so, you know, one of my questions is. How selfish should we be, like, do we create our own? You know, uh, I mean, because it, 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 it's a big peninsula, you, you know, it's, it's a really, you know, you know, like. Like, I would think that any housing that was more than twenty-five minutes away is not gonna be good for summer workers. I think, you know, Bucksport is probably the outer limit.
I, I think that's a very fair question and I think that's something that we are going to have to decide is how much. How much do we wanna drive our future on future?
Exactly.
Um.
You know, and the way this grant is written, okay, we're the recipients of it, it's our grant. But.
But.
Every, it, it's, it's really.
Something.
Everything is, so all I'm saying is that it's, it, I, I love it and it's sloppy at the same time.
Right, yeah, can I ask a question, um, and I don't know if you guys have, have done this or what, you've talked about it, but. Um, you know, even like before moving to like proposed changes to ordinances. Can there be an arm of the committee that is researching and connecting with communities in Maine that have. Have already done. And Rockland and areas where I'm hearing on the news, you know, we have, for example, we just, um, one of my staff members. Um, formerly was a state trooper dispatch and assistant, whatever, in her prior life. So she has a former colleague of hers who was just hired and just moved, um, a great distance. Either from Missouri or from Alaska, I can't recall, to Rockland to join their dispatch service. But when she was interviewed, she was brought to the Rockland Workforce Housing Unit and said. This is a condo and this is how much it costs and this is, this is stipulation. And it's for, as I understand, a lot of their public works, their workforce and, and she was so excited. It was a two-bedroom, you know, hundred, and so that was three months ago, so she just arrived and moved in. So in the visit, she came out of her interview, spent a few days here, interviewed, left with housing, left with a job. And, and then she could make that a plan, so what I'm thinking is, we have communities who have started or further ahead. And, and we spend.
It's interesting, it's interesting, because I, I went up, the first thing I said to Greg when I went up and met him the first time, I said, Craig, Greg. Give me examples of what works, and he said, well, uh, starting at this, this fifteen minutes, and I'm thinking like, like. He was not, he was not in touch with what was going on in Lower Maine.
Yeah.
You know, they, they brought him from Buffalo, New York.
So, and so, so he's in Kaukaun, so he's in Kaukaun, and so, but this is great, and yeah.
And if you, if you talk about, you must call it the town office in Rockland, because they, they are connected with that and however they. However, they may, cuz there's also something in terms of how the tenant pays their rent or how much of it is subsidized by the town. I don't know all that arrangement, but it's incredibly affordable, I don't know if there's a certain timeline to kind of, idea to be transitional or not. Um, but there was that and then, um, I don't know, maybe six, eight weeks ago on. The Bangor NBC channel morning, um, News Center.
Box twenty, WBI.
W, uh, the NBC one.
Yeah.
WLD.
Yeah, yeah, oh, oh.
That is.
NBC, right, yeah, right.
Um, they did a big piece on, uh, it's either Boothberg or Fair Harbor. They were just opening up theirs and that was something that is taking years. And so I need to be curious to see, how did they change their ordinances, what were their issues, what were their goals, who were their target tenants? And learn from them.
In our last meeting, um, Craig, not this, this meeting before last, Craig came and I said to Craig. How many units do you need for MMA employees?
Of Craig Johnsons?
Yeah, Craig, and he said that MMA would take, was it twelve or twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, but he was like, he was like, in a second, he said, we need, you know, either twelve or twenty, two bit renewed. For the, you know, as people come in, as, as like temporary housing until they find something in. And so, and that was like a hard number, you know what I mean?
And I think, I think they're also part of that conversation, I think, and I don't know what Craig's view is on this. But we have a number of homes and buildings on MMA's property. But there's been a time where they have been largely housed by EPs or upper leadership. Where I believe, from what I understand from other people, they were designed for transitional housing for your adjunct faculty and then.
Anti-adward.
Very, very heavy on the leadership side and that has been brought up at different meetings on campus to say. What are we gonna do, because I think the executive leadership and probably the salaries they're making. Are not necessarily maybe in line with that, so I don't know, and I've not had a chance to talk to Craig, but I think. I'd be curious what his vision is for that now that he's in it.
Well, one thing we did talk to, uh, 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 Craig about is if the group that rents in the summer. The, the, what's the organization that rents, the, the, in, in the summertime, they rent MMA, they do teaching, um. And they move a bit of the dorms.
Well, we have a lot of conferences that come, the biggest one is probably the Miniaturists.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, the Miniaturists, yeah, yeah, so he said, if they don't come back next year, I guess they renew every year.
They do, but they've been coming for forty years, so.
But he was, then there must be something else, he was, anyway, the, what he said is that MMA would entertain. Renting dorm rooms to businesses, uh, to, for, for, for workforce housing in the summer. And then Tony Palatino was like, but what about kitchens and what about this? And it would have to be that, 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 that the school is just offering a place for people, so even the businesses have to provide. The, the, you know.
Right, there's, right, and there's probably a lot of different questions associated with it, yes, there are seven hundred rooms at Hurdis Hall. Now, there's a massive renovation project going on at Hurdis Hall, which I think is not due to be completed until like twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
So I'm not sure that, I'm, I can't remember if the Miniaturists and other conferences folks can come up this summer depending on the nature. Of, of that particular project, but there's that, there's the graduate housing, the commons, which are more apartment style with kitchens. Um, that are, um, on campus as well, so I think, you know, there's, there are options, there's, there are points for discussion.
No, but, but, but this will be balancing all these ideas, we've been balancing all these ideas around, but when you have people. Who are very goal, goal and oriented and patience isn't their strong suit, it, it, it creates a lot of tension in the community.
Sends one to Rockland, send one to Boothberg Harbor with, you know, research order.
North Haven Island also has some type of, they, um, because. They were having problems of workers in no place, so they created some type of a program there.
I think, I think, I think I sent you all pictures when I was in Ireland, those, those cute little. Those cute little, they were, they were like little eagles, but they were, they came and they just dropped it in, they got, they.
It's interesting, when you describe that, I feel like it's something that we saw in Scotland a few years ago. And they were all there and I was just like, this is some kind of housing development.
Well.
They were, but they were so adorable and I was thinking for, for, for workforce housing in the, in the summer. You had twenty of them, I mean, of course, you have to deal who's gonna, who's gonna put them on, who's gonna make sure it's clean and, but.
And there's probably gotta be a distinction, I think also for summer, workforce housing and year-round, where you're.
Exactly.
Well, because we need to serve both.
Have you ever been to like Cherryfield, I think, where the blueberry is there?
Uh-huh.
And they have all these little houses like that too for migrant workers to live in that pick the blueberries.
Uh, just one other, one other, it's just a question, okay, so we have a big election coming up next year.
Yes.
Okay, I think it would be great if Castine posted, um, town halls for both parties. Like, I think it would be great, like, if whoever, whoever wins the, 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 the primaries, you know, I mean.
Um, I, I think that's good, I don't know if we can do that, do that.
Uh, we should be, cuz should probably be non-political, but we could offer some group to sponsor it, whether it's both.
But I just think it would be, it would be great at the Castine that we get, the, the reason I said, I would love it if we modeled civil discourse.
Ah, okay.
You know, I mean, like, my, my whole thing would be like, okay, we're this little town, the, 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 the country's crazy right now. When we have people from the different parties come. When we have people from the different parties come, we model the way, we model civil discourse. And I just, I just think that that would be wonderful.
Okay, uh, I would make a motion that we adjourn this work Saturday.